I wanted to underscore that highest interest concept because it can be confusing if you're trying to reconcile what the developer actually wants to do against what the market is and what the developers want to do. Um, I know, there we go, thanks. Yep, that's good. So let's talk about the underpinning of the financials. And there are two basic concepts built into the 121A agreement. One is the notion of what's the maximum price or annual payment that you can expect to receive? And then, what's the minimum price or minimum payment? Because we wanted in the negotiation to ensure that you get the dollar amount every year that's commensurate with the market rate performance of the project, but also that in no event do you get less than what is necessary to pay for that part, to pay for deferred payment and permit fees, which we'll come to in a minute, and of course, to pay the statutory Section 10 excise tax, which is required under Chapter 1.18. And the maximum payment has been established, again, based on our evaluation of what the project can support without, you know, cratering, at 10% of all the gross revenues from the rental operation. So it's rents, it's pet fees, it's laundry income, it's all of the revenue that the project generates. The payment is established as a maximum of 10%. Now, I should say, less the amount of excise payment, and I should distinguish between the payments that go directly to Quincy versus the ones that come to Quincy by way of the Department of Revenue. In other words, the excise tax that you pay, the developer's going to write that check directly to the Department of Revenue. But eventually, after the amounts are certified, those monies come back to the city of Quincy. So we're trying to distinguish between the things that are direct versus the things that are indirect and making sure that the developer doesn't pay twice for that 10%, so, I'm sorry, for the excise tax component of this package. So it's 10% of all the revenue minus that part that's going to go to the DOR and come back. And then, there's a direct payment, a minimum amount, which has been devised as the parking rent necessary to pay the developer's pro rata share of their cost of garage, plus amortization of permit fees, which are quite substantial. We estimate almost a million dollars in a permit fee will be required to get this project off the ground, which consists of a building permit and other connection fees, sort of connection fees. And we've devised a mechanism for amortizing those costs over the first 10 years of the agreement, so that the developer doesn't have to pay cash in the barrelhead for those on day one, because the economics are quite difficult, especially early on, while the apartment rents are greasing up, the apartment rents are ramping up. So that's the basic concept, the maximum, but a floor. And the maximum, as I've already said, is 10% of gross revenue. And less that Section 10 excise, which, you know, the Department of Revenue has a bit of an arcane formula for this, it's 5% of whatever the 121A corporation income is. That's different from the project rent, et cetera, that's what the corporation itself has for revenue. And 10% per thousand of value, the value reset by contract. Remember, this is not, yes, the Section 10 excise is just that, it's an excise tax. It's not an annual tax based on the actual real life value of the property, it's an excise tax. So we've got some examples that I can show you in a minute of how we've thought about computing, how much money that's likely to be, and also, how much money we expect, you know, in general terms, you know, again, parking cost numbers quite yet, but, I mean, illustration is a better way to put it, of the parking lease rent and the permit fee amortization. There's another law, these are the top, which, I think it's another file. Love it, okay, so it's going to be pet parking, I'll get mine out, and then it'll be all set. So, if you have these lovely sheets, I think it's just, what you have, I believe, is the exhibit for, does it say parking, illustration, something like that, D2? Yes, D2, D2, correct. And this is in the agreement as an illustration, but it's helpful here, I think. So when we try to establish what the parking rent will be, the arithmetic goes like this, it's really pretty simple. You take the total number of spaces in the garage, we estimated that number, again, we know it's in a range of 600 to 700, our illustration is 675, and we've, again, a placeholder until we have real costs, $35,000 per space to build that garage, that's 23,600 in total cost. The developer wants 130 spaces to serve the 124 units in their project, which is a little under a 20% pro rata share in this illustration, which means that of the 23,600, the developer's cost basis, if you will, is 4.55 million. That's the amount of money that we want the developer to return to the city in exchange for their right to use those spaces. We expect that the garage will be financed, as we have seen other things be financed in Quincy and elsewhere, on a 10-year ban for the initial period, to be followed by, taken out by, a 30-year general obligation bond. And if we look at the interest rates, sort of the maximum that we've seen on bans, it's about a 2% rate, we know that the borrowing on the garage is going to happen on day one, but the project isn't going to open and be responsible to pay for these things until the garage is done, they can't use the spaces until the garage is done. So we are paying eight years' worth, two years of construction, then eight years to get through the bans, around $91 million covers the cost of the developer's share of the debt service. In years 11 through 40, again, the 121A agreement is a 40-year agreement, in years 11 through 40, the debt is fully amortizing, you have a general obligation bond, the whole thing has to be paid, and the full amortization, assuming a maximum 5% interest rate, is, over a 30-year term, is $293,000 per year. So the parking lease, then, is set as an initial period of around 90, in this illustration, around $91,000.
Just wanted to double check the $91 million.
Yeah, sorry, I want to use zeros a lot. $91,000 for the initial period while the vans are in place, and then $293,105, and on this illustration, for the remainder of the term. And essentially, what the developer is doing is stepping into your shoes, taking responsibility for their share of what you're shelling out every year to cover the borrowing. And that represents one piece of that minimum payment. In addition, as I mentioned, we are enabling, if we have this agreement, the developer to pay over time for those million-odd dollars' worth of permit fees, and those costs are being amortized more quickly. You know, the garage is going to be there a long time, permit fees, you're going without that money, we want it to be repaid as quickly as possible. And so we've set, again, an eight-year schedule, the garage is done, the building is done, and over the following eight years, the permit fees, in this illustration, $900,000 worth, are getting repaid, to the tune of another $137,000 worth of all the payment. So the parking rent and the permit, we'll call it permit rent, permit fee, sets our minimum. And then we have the Chapter 10 excise, Section 10 excise, which is, again, a relatively small number, because we're wanting to, quite frankly, minimize the amount that has to go out to DOR and back again, because you want to get the most of the money to flow directly into your coffers. So we have calibrated a contract for the Section 10 payment that is relatively small, but defensible from the perspective of DOR. And so the 10% sets the maximum. Now, I can tell you that the pro formas that we've been looking at that are based on Quincy market rent, and the developer's mix, and so on, show a 10% of gross income, again, this is purely illustrative, we won't know until the building opens what the actual revenue will look like, but it's about $425,000, you know, once the project is stabilized after we were estimating roughly a year worth of lease up. And so we have plenty of money, let's just put it that way, for the developer to pay 10%, and, you know, as a part of that, their excise payment, to pay for these minimum payments and still return an excess amount to the city coffers in the form of, you know, sort of free and clear taxes. And we've actually done a little bit of math to get comfortable with how this works, remember my comment about we're striving for a market rate test? If I take the excess amount after the subtraction for these dedicated streams for parking and permits and so on, the amount of money that the project, we expect it to return is, guess what, it's roughly equivalent to what you would have otherwise gotten if all you did was a stickover podium development. And, you know, that's what I call a cosmic convergence. We are enabling, by these agreements, for a more efficient use of city land, for a development that we believe will spur other developments in the downtown to the benefit of not just this parcel in the hand I bought, frankly, but for the developments in general. And at the same time, we are actually setting the table here for your, for your getting a lot more taxes over time than you would have otherwise gotten if you just put this to market as a stickover podium development, and, BS, you're getting the developer to help you see the construction of this garage, which, again, is not just for the benefit of the developer, it's for the benefit of everyone else in the vicinity. And without a 20% essentially assistance to help you build that, you know, it's a hard road to build a big garage and not have some anchor users already committed. So anyway, I've talked for way too long. I've never been accused of having too little to say, so.
It's okay.
So I apologize for that, and, you know, I hope that provides an overview. I'm sorry you don't have the appraisal number yet, we are putting a stick to our friend who's preparing it, and I expect you'll have it very soon, so.
Thanks, we always appreciate what you have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then to that, Pam has been an indispensable member of the team to clearly put the finances here, and you can see that she brings her own expertise and passion. And as it relates to the question, and this is quoted by Councilman Finn, this is obviously going to be a component of the discussion that the council will have and that we will present with respect to the finances of the garage itself, if you have a point. But the final, this will ultimately be municipal garage, the public space around it will be municipal property, its open space or permitted roadways or the garage or civic space of some description of another, will be financed ultimately by the DIF fund, the portion that Ms. Kennedy referred to relates to the rental that will be attributable to this particular development, and so as she mentions, it's an anchor tenant in some respects, and you will see that with the next LDA that comes in, and prospectively with future LDAs that come in, when those developments are seeking some space in the garage, they're going to have to pay for it. And so I just want to make that clarification. Finally, I'm going to ask the other side, if you will, of the legal team, representing the O'Connell representatives, to comment on a number of the elements that are contained in the legal section of the LDA, which of course is quite extensive, and not for the faint of heart. And we have the good fortune to have Mr. Fishman representing us, who's been through this before, he was, in most respects, the author, squared members, we say, of the agreement. And Mr. Davis of the firm, Mahoney and Cranes, was representing Mr. O'Connell. And it's important to note that we have been providing iterations of this to Mr. Chen Shea, your meritorial counsel, and we plan on meeting with Mr. Shea to go over every element of the legal aspects of the agreement in the forthcoming week, so you will have the venue of his commentary before, during your next session, where this is before you. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. David Davis to step forward to the fore.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, councilors and chairwoman. I'm going to be, I don't have to explain anything nearly as complex as Pam did, so I want to assure you that I'll be able to dispatch my responsibility, perhaps a little bit more quickly than she did. I must say, I found her understanding and thoughtfulness in this whole process fairly amazing. I practiced a lot for over 40 years in doing pretty significant commercial real estate projects, and I only had one other occasion to deal with Pam, and it was an extremely successful one, and I again enjoyed the process, and I think the city's very much benefited by having her counsel. She is truly good with the economics of this deal, the Shea. So just by way of background, I've been here before, none of you may recall me, but I represented Street Works in negotiating the LDA for actually a much more extensive undertaking, because it involved both the Ross garage and on Tancot Lot, that's whole. So I'm back for appearance with a much smaller parcel of land in mind, but with the benefit of a lot of the good work and thoughtfulness that went into that original LDA, the Street Works, which originated with Bob Fishman and the city negotiating team. And I'm pleased to report that although, in some respects, this is a pretty simple purchase and sale agreement, it has built into it a number of the elements which the city and this council required included in the Street Works transaction. So what I thought I would do is just sort of run those off for you. This is a little different from a typical purchase agreement, because typically, the seller sells, gets its money, and it leaves, it has no further interest in what transpires. Here, however, the city's the seller, it has greater interest. And so there is built into this agreement what I guess I would call post-closing protections. Number one, there's an absolute obligation to start construction within 90 days after the closing. So there's no concern that somehow this piece of real estate is going to sit idly by, it will be put in use immediately. There's a bookend obligation, and that is to finish the project within 17 months after it begins. And given the magnitude of the project, obviously, the work is going to have to move along at a risk pace to meet that schedule. In addition, it's always important for parties such as the city in this case to be assured that it's only dealing with whom it believes it is dealing. And so there is a limitation and no transferability of any interest in the project until after it's been completed and the city's issued a certificate of completion. In addition, an important provision, which this council assisted on last time, there can be no amendment of this agreement without the approval of the council. So once it goes out the door, it will be the agreement and can't be changed without coming back to see. There are also, I think, are some significant benefits to this agreement, which you can touch upon briefly by Mr. Geary and by Pam. First of all, there's the responsibility to build and maintain that park along Cod Street that Carlos pointed out earlier. There's a responsibility to serve as the construction manager or contractor for the garage for the fixed price and with payment performance bonds to the city, so that any overrun risk essentially belongs to the developer and not to the city, which I think is an important consideration and a very significant benefit. Finally, and perhaps more importantly, one never knows what's going to happen with parking and automobiles if you look forward to the 40-year future, in parts like Oland, I'm going to see the end of that, but there is an absolute fixed obligation for a 40-year period to pay this parking rent. So indeed, it's a valuable backstop for the financing that the city will need to undertake in order to move this forward. So that really is my summary. I'm perfectly happy with Bill to answer any questions or provide a response, any comments that you have.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, this concludes the administration's portion of the presentation. I do appreciate your acknowledging the city council's legal counsel, Mr. Shea, in the audience, I know that you'll have him before us next week at our follow-up meetings. So with that, who would like to start us off? There we go, Councilwoman G.
I just have a couple of questions. First, I mean, I don't feel maybe you're even supposed to, but we're really not considering any of the financials tonight, I mean, we can't without the appraisal, right? So we're really, this is kind of the legal portion of the LDA.
That is correct, the legal and the financial as it relates to the 121A and 6A and the formulation or the formula that will guide the setting of the rental fee toward the garage.
Which is the legal stuff, I mean, the legal stuff declares that that's what sets out the formula for the payments.
That is correct.
Pam made a comment earlier, and I'm not asking you to speak for Pam or anything, she said, but.
I'd be a senior.
Yeah.
She knows the numbers, like the one on the revenue.
She had said something that really caught my attention, in terms of saying cosmic something.
Convergence.
Convergence, right? That it all circles back around to the same amount, that the city will get the same amount of revenue generation through this LDA and the agreements contained in here as we would for the value that we can expect from the appraisal. But in order to know that, you must have an idea of what the value coming from the appraisal is, otherwise you wouldn't be able to, you can't compare X to Y if you only know Y, you have to know X and Y. So you guys have some idea of what the appraisal is, and I haven't heard that yet tonight, so.
It has not been formally conveyed.
I can, let me just clarify. So as you rightly point out, we don't have the appraisal yet, and, you know, we don't actually know exactly what that number's going to be. However, when I say that the tax payments are equivalent, I'm looking at your existing property in Quincy, including the things that are in the downtown and that are tower, and looking at the taxes that those properties are paying per unit. And I can see from the tax comparables that the amount of money that we're talking about here is generally consistent with the per-unit taxes that you're currently charging to other projects. Now, that's not a direct relation to the land value, that's for a fully developed project, right?
Right, but I got the impression of what you were saying, when you, I got the impression that you were trying to lower the bar a little bit in terms of where the standard, you know, set. It's like, no, no, in terms of what the appraisal will come back, it's like, it's like a pre-debate spin, like our candidate, he didn't prepare at all for the debate, so if he doesn't drool himself, it'll be great, you know, because you said that it's going to be the best and highest use, that's what the appraisal value is.
Yes.
And then you seem to go out of your way to talk about that this isn't, and the best and highest use, I'm guessing based on what your presentation was, is stickover podium.
Exactly, but remember that the appraisal is only going for land. And what we're talking about here for the tax payments for the project on completion is not just land, it's the land plus a developed project. And so there's really not a relationship between what the appraisal is going to say, that's going to be what it is, based on the market for other properties that's transacting. So don't mistake my comparison here with stickover podium development, with the land appraisal, because those are two really different things.
Are we going to get two appraisals?
No, because you're only transacting land.
Right, but we also control what's going into that land, because we're the master developer now. Before, the last time you were here before, when the other LDA was going forward, we weren't the master developer, we didn't have control of what would be developed on the land, once we disposed of the land as an asset. But in this situation, we are the master developer, so we control both. If we said, nope, we don't like a 15-story tower, we want a 13 and 1/2 story tower, we theoretically could set the table, and that's what we demand, and there's a value to that, because we are now the master developer. So why would we not get an appraisal as to the value of the land, an appraisal as to what is the highest and best use of the land, because we're the master developer, we want to see the highest invest?
You're going to get a value of the land that reflects its highest invest use for development of what the market revealed in the current environment. All I'm trying to suggest to you is that we're trying to craft an agreement for something that is bigger and taller and not feasible today, right? No developer would build this 15-story project without the sorts of ingredients that we've been talking about.
Which gets me to what my other point was going to be, is we're disposing of an asset, why not put a price on it and dispose of it? And I must say, that's the best idea, but I don't know, this is a very circular discussion in terms of the revenue and how it comes back to the city, the 121A payments, the excise tax being knocked off, the 10% of gross, the parking permit fees, you know, there's language in here that we get, you know, a percentage of every load of laundry that's done there, literally, it does, it's, we get the laundry, we get all the percentage of the laundry brands. So that, to me, seems monumentally more complex than simply saying, we have this land, it's for sale. Why are we doing it?
It comes back to the very first question, right, is why are we doing this? And as I think several of us have said here, what we're trying to do is to make the most efficient use of a very scarce resource. efficient use of a very scarce resource. If all you're building is five-story or a stick on this piece of land, then that has a value to it forever, you know, once it's done, capped by a program that you can fit on that. Whereas if we use a 15, if we can build a 15-story layer cake on that parcel, you've got the economic potential. Again, we have to help at the beginning to get it built, I guess is how I think about it. But once it is built, it has the potential, 10% of all of the revenue for 124 units is a lot of money, which over time is going to outperform what you would otherwise have expected to get. And I think, which is a good point, and I understand that.
So you're saying, you know, with this type of development, it may not be the best and highest use, may not be one that is even feasible in the marketplace, both of which things are mildly concerning to me, but put those aside, move forward with the discussion of what's before us. And you're saying that it's a greater reward in the long term, which I'm okay with. I understand that. I get that premise. But we're the government. We're not a for-profit entity. So I think in terms of what's the greatest good that we can do, right? It may not always be the revenue coming back, maybe preservation of open public space, right? And I'm not saying, you know, we leave it as a paid parking lot. That's clearly not what I'm saying. But, you know, the previous master plan for downtown included a lot of public space. It had value. It included, you know, art. It included the marketplace square. It included a place for the farmer's market in the downtown, a place for people to gather. And I haven't seen any of that replicated since we've been the master developer. It's just about jamming as much as we can into this very small space that we have. And I don't know that that is the best use of government resource. So, I don't know if you have a comment for that, or if that's more just my opinion?
It's above my pay rate.
Yeah, no, that's fine. No, that's fine.
But what I would say is that in, when you become the master developer, you are suddenly in the position of having to execute a plan over time, knowing that you can't get it all on day-to-day. And so I guess what I observe in this program, and then I'll shut them up.
Well, I have more questions for you, Bill. Sorry. You can get that back when you get the microphone back.
What I would observe is that what this project enables is the catalyst for the very things you're talking about, for the ability to...
But for give all land away, there's no way to pay...
Well, to pay for a public open space in Cottage Street and to maintain that, again, to your open space program.
Is that a plan somewhere?
That's an obligation. To pay for the infrastructure that will allow a garage that can unlock the development potential of other parcels without which the economics of those parcels is more difficult. To plug into a grid, you know, that will ultimately fill out with other projects over time, that will ultimately yield the very thing you're hoping for. And, you know, you have to start, it's always a tough thing as the master developer in the early going because, you know, you've got that one building. It's like, that's not the whole magilla. You want the whole thing to build out eventually, but you have to start somewhere.
And I don't disagree with that. My, when you're saying it's just one building, it's not the whole magilla, I like that term. But we have only so much public land to control the debate, to control what happens there. And this is a big portion of it. So while it may not, one building may not be the whole magilla, this is a big, big part of the magilla because we don't have a lot. We have this, we have Ross, Ross parking lot.
It's 13,000 feet, though, in a 10-acre assemblage, if you count Ross and Hancock.
Say that again, what?
It's a 13,005 parcel.
Of how much?
Out of a 10 acres, five at Hancock, five at Ross. So it's actually a really tiny proportion. What do I calculate? It's like 40, a 40th of the total of the landholdings you have. So it feels, it feels big because it's tall and, you know, as the diagrams show, it's going to be visible and all of that. But in fact, as a catalytic effect in terms of and using your land, it's a pretty small move, which has the potential to pay a pretty big dividend. So, you know, I guess that's...
Okay. No, I get it. And a couple, no, a couple more questions for you. We can run through these kind of like rapid. You said, first of all, this project was announced on April 7, 2014. So we're now a year and a half away. What has been the issue with getting the appraisal for the, you said there was some issues?
Just defining all of the various agreements and easements and how big they are and where they are.
How does that matter to just the land, though?
Oh, well, the appraiser has to know what's being transacted. You know, the appraisal is going to include the value for the fee parcel as well as all the tangential rights that go in the easements and, you know, and various obligations that are going to go to the developer, like having to build a park and various things.
So essentially, until the LDA was done, the appraiser couldn't get...
There really wasn't, you know, they couldn't really pull the trigger on a full-blown appraisal exercise. It doesn't mean they weren't collecting comps and doing various things, but they couldn't really put the analytics together until the LDA was done.
And the concept of 10% of the revenue of the project, again, I think it's, you could have a slippery slope when we're, when we're getting a percentage of business. And just, there's a certain role, a certain line that I think government should encourage business, encourage growth, and we do that up here a lot, Mayor does it a lot, and we work well together doing that. Granite Telecommunications is a good example of that. But when we have a percentage, we have a stake in someone's business, especially a single property, residential property, then government has more of an interest in that residential property than it does in other residential properties. And I don't think that's the goal that, well, I wonder whether or not that's not the role government should be playing. I have concerns with that. But so the concept is 10% of the revenue of the project? That's similar to, essentially, it's similar to the golf question, right?
It's a common question. But it's a very common structure with that in terms of structuring of 121A's. That's effectively how they're structured, is as a percentage of income generally. Sometimes there's just a fixed schedule, but most of the time the percentage is unknown because the concept is you've got this valuable resource, you're contributing it, you know, yes, you're getting paid for it, but you know, you're, you're using it to facilitate development, and you want to be a participant in the future value that you're helping to create. And the best way to do that is not to pay just cash on the barrelhead and walk away. It's to have a part of the rising tide and success of the downtown plan and vision as it unfolds.
Well, we could do that if we remained the property owner and simply did a long-term lease. I mean, when Mr. Bruce had won significant parcels that he assembled down in South Quincy, he leased it out for them to build the Loews, he did groundings.
So we're trying, we're trying to establish something that gives you sort of, I should say, that allows for project feasibility and finanzability while giving you a piece of the action, so to speak, in lieu of the taxes that you would otherwise be collecting from a more conventional structure.
And I have no problem with the 121As. I think you have to encourage the development down there, then. I think 121A is an appropriate way to do that. But I don't know that it's in the city's best interest and the taxpayer's best interest to have action in the game. I think that's, maybe that's a fundamental principle that I'd need to get over initially to start to see the benefit to this, but I would think it's cleaner and simpler if we just lease out the land. He builds what he builds on it, and there's some sort of negotiation of term, right? To give it over, it's gone, never to be...
Well, it is and it isn't in the sense that you have a financial interest that is tantamount to that revenue stream. You know, I guess, again, there are pros and cons associated with leasing versus selling. On another, on another evening, we could talk about the details of that. But I think that the, the approach that we're taking here, suggested to you, is one that allows sort of the best of both worlds. You get cash on the barrelhead for the, for the underlying land while at the same time and in addition to you get this participating structure of your value. So it's kind of a, you know, an attempt in a way to have your keg in it too, which is a rare thing to achieve. And I, maybe cosmic convergence is going a little, a little too far in terms of describing the approach to it, but I think that's sort of the...
Well, I appreciate that. I always feel as though, you know, I gain new insight whenever you present something to the council, and tonight's no different. I, perhaps I'm more surprised in reading the LDA because I didn't know that this was something that was ever contemplated, that we were going to get a piece of gross revenue. So maybe that's part of where I'm coming from. So I'm open-minded to it. I'll take a look at this, we'll continue. Curious to hear what my colleagues have to say. Thank you. I have just one other question for Mr. Geary, one serious topic, one topic. Parking garage, we're going to be the owner of a parking garage?
Yes.
Right. So five or six years ago, when we first proposed being the owner of a parking garage, there were several of us who said, we don't have the best track record owning and operating a parking garage. We just had to demolish the one and then build a parking lot so that we could rebuild a parking garage where the old parking garage was. So we don't have a great track record of maintaining and operating a parking garage. Our parking receipts on an annual basis have taken a nosedive since I've been councilor, just off the side of the cliff. So I'm wondering, where's the backend, right? So if this is the division, which, and I understand this is a hard, hard way we get through this, but assuming we get through this and this is the plan that goes forward, I haven't seen any in terms of how we're going to manage parking lot. I haven't seen any financials of what the cost is to maintain a parking lot in working order. So I'm wondering, is that forthcoming? Is that, are those financials somewhere? And I would like to see that in contemplation of the LDA because we buy a parking lot when we sign this thing, essentially. Ms. Warner, say it again.
Administration, Mr. Warner. Mr. Geary.
The points that you make are both track record by many of the master developers.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, yeah.
With Boston. Boston is getting out of the parking lot business in some respect, but not in all respects. It's the city's intention, and as part of the analysis that our consultants have engaged in now, it's a prominent consulting firm that does this around North America, we would be looking at having the parking lot maintained and managed by outsourcing by professional firms in that business. That would be part of...
It wouldn't be current parking lot division?
No, no. It would be a firm that does this around the nation.
I jest, but yes, no, I... Do we have a cost on that? Is there a price added to that?
We, it's under formulation right now. That is part of the presentation.
The financials have to come back.
That's coming back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Geary.
And obviously, that also would be subject to the council's approval, all of those elements. And I just, and I know you gave it the opportunity to escape, but...
Yes. I wanted to ask a council question. Don't filibuster. I'm trying to give it out of this.
Right. Easily. But just in terms of due to your comments, counselor, about open space, it's important to know, and Pam, her comments did.
I said open space, I'm not really familiar. I said open space, I meant more public space. That only the downtown should be a block, right? I mean, what I'm going to talk about, turn it into a block, it's not going to happen.
We believe that by taking a small parcel and developing a 15-story building, that leaves more opportunity for more civic space. And indeed, as part of the presentation we will be making to the council on the garage, we will demonstrate to the council that that's an integral component of creating open civic space that's going to bring people into what you mentioned, a market square. That is very much the concept that we are attempting to fashion and to develop, and we hope in many respects like a European square, it's going to surround you by residential...
We certainly have the appropriate number of legal licenses for a European square.
They may well do that as well. Okay, thank you, counselor.
Thanks. And I don't...